We will now call a common council meeting of November fifteenth to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Here.
Lorik.
Here.
Dukenyak.
Here.
Alderperson Marshall is excused. Alderman Gale.
Here.
And Alderperson Kuzikowski is.
Everybody, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Rich, you want to start us off?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that will get us to the approval of minutes of eleven one twenty-two. If everybody, please take a look. Satisfied, there's no questions, comments, or discussion? Motion, please. Lorik will second. Roll call.
Alderman Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Item four is consideration of a council proclamation. It's congratulations to Tyler Doms for receiving the Eagle Scout Award. Catherine, would you please read that in?
Certainly. Congratulations to Tyler Doms for receiving the Eagle Scout Award. Whereas the conferring of an Eagle Scout is one of the highest awards that can be bestowed upon a Boy Scout. And whereas such an award, such award is an earned award and that the recipient must perform and successfully complete and pass the rigid requirements exacted to achieve an Eagle Scout Award. And whereas less than four percent of all Scouts actually achieve this goal. And whereas at a court of honor to be held at Riverbend Nature Center on Sunday, November twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, at twelve thirty PM, an Eagle Award will be conferred upon Tyler Doms. And whereas during his time as a scout, Riverbend Nature Center has been a place that has been as supportive to his troop, providing the Scouts with an area to learn about nature, practice their canoeing skills, and earn various merit badges. And therefore, as his Eagle project, Tyler chose to give back to the Riverbend by raising funds and constructing fourteen Leopold benches for the nature center. And whereas the benches will be placed throughout the Riverbend Nature Center as memorials for loved ones. And whereas Tyler coordinated the efforts of twenty-one volunteers, including fellow scouts and family members, to assist with fundraising and construction of the benches, putting in a total of over a hundred and nine man-hours of work. And whereas, as a result of completing his Eagle Scout rank requirements, Tyler earned an additional fifteen merit badges to earn his bronze, gold, and silver palms. And whereas, the Oak Creek Common Council wishes to recognize this noteworthy achievement to Tyler Doms. Now therefore be it resolved, the mayor and common council of the city of Oak Creek hereby extend their congratulations to Eagle Scout Tyler Doms for having an Eagle Scout Award conferred upon him by the Boy Scouts of America. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and the city clerk be, and she is hereby directed, to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Tyler Doms, presented and adopted this fifteenth day of November, two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you, Catherine. Does anybody familiar with Tyler want to say anything if you know Tyler? I will be present at Tyler's presentation and awarding of his Eagle Scout merit. I'm never cease to be amazed that our community and these kids we have and the accomplishments they're doing. I want to say this is about our sixth Eagle Scout just in my tenure as mayor. It's amazing the work they're doing to better the community. But more importantly, it really gives me a lot of satisfaction knowing we have these individuals out here in the next generation that will lead us. And I'll offer my congratulations to Tyler on behalf of myself and the council. With that, we'll go for a motion. Lorik moves to adopt council proclamation number two-two-zero-four. Congratulations to Tyler Doms for receiving the Eagle Scout Award.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye. And item five is consideration of a request by Milwaukee County Parks to rezone a portion of the property at seventeen oh-nine West Drexel Avenue from A-one Limited Agricultural to P-one Park District. Catherine, would you please read the public notice and properly?
Certainly. Public hearing number one is to consider requests submitted by Milwaukee County Parks to rezone a portion of the property at one-seven-zero-nine West Drexel Avenue from A-one Limited Agricultural to P-one Park District. No change to FW floodway or FF flood fringe districts. The applicant is Milwaukee County Parks, property owner, Milwaukee County Parks. Legal description there follows. Date of notice, October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Doug Seymour. I'm the Director of Community Development for the city of Oak Creek. And this is a public hearing and a request to rezone the property at seventeen oh-nine West Drexel Avenue from A-one Agricultural to P-one Park. The properties highlighted in the red dashes that you see on the screen before you, just as a bit of history, this parcel was actually acquired by the Wisconsin Department of Transportation as part of the Drexel Out Interchange and I-94 expansion. And as such, you'll notice if you can see through the aerial, you can see the actual on-ramps to southbound I-41, I-94 are contained within a portion of this parcel. So what this is doing is it's keeping that portion for public right-of-way, which is, you can see in kind of the dark blue there, and transferring the remainder to Milwaukee County, being adjacent to Falk Park. This would become part of the county's ownership and would be protected as permanent open space. There are no plans to develop that. It is just kind of returning that to be a part of Falk Park. With that in mind, and one other thing I should note that, as a kind of cleanup to this, we will be doing a conference plan amendment to recognize that transfer. There's no rush to that and it shouldn't hold up this rezoning, but just something that, next time we do a council plan amendment, we'll include that as part of that. A planning commission has reviewed this request. They've recommended its approval. So at this point in time, if there's anyone who has any questions or comments regarding the proposed rezoning of the property at seventeen oh-nine West Drexel Avenue, please approach the microphone, give your name and address, and proceed to address your questions and/or comments to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Can I just, the graphic?
Oh, you're right. It should. So on the graphic, the area that's in the black and white hash is the area to be retained for the right-of-way, and the area in the light blue is the portion that'll be for Falk Park. Good eye.
As Doug stated, we're going to make three calls. This is a public hearing. This will be the first call. If you wish to speak, please approach podium, give your name and address.
Frank Lenti, seventeen forty-one West Drexel Avenue. My question is, is this property right next to my property?
Is where the freeway on-ramps are, actually.
Yes. What's, how are you going to enter that property?
You're not. It's part of, it's becoming part of Falk Park.
So it's just going to be dormant like it is now?
Yes.
Then I have a question. I have a tree that is falling down and I got little kids. Who do I talk to about that?
Depending on where it is, I mean, I'd start with the Department of Public Works. We have a forestry department.
I came here and they have no phone number, no information on that piece of property.
I'd start with the Department of Public Works.
Correct. I would go through our forestry department. They're listed on our website. If not, they may have a card out front, a business card. If you don't get hold of them, probably the county or DOT, depending on where it sits. But start local and they'll direct you if it's county property or DOT.
Thank you.
If it's on your property, it'll be your responsibility.
It's not.
Okay.
Right on the water, edge of the water, borders my property, but it's falling.
I don't want to speculate, but Matt, anything? Work your way up. Okay. Thank you. Second call. Third and final call, anybody wishing to speak? Item five. We will now close the public hearing and go on to item six, which is consideration of the ordinance rezoning the property, the portion of the property at seventeen oh-nine West Drexel Avenue from A-one Limited Agricultural to P-one Park District. Council, any questions, concerns? Greg?
Just to reiterate, at Planning Commission, there was a representative from the county there. And he did confirm that the county has no interest in adding amenities or doing anything with that property other than leaving it as-is.
Great. Thank you, Greg. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing no further discussion, motion?
Lorik moves to adopt ordinance number three-zero-five-seven, rezoning a portion of the property at seventeen zero-nine West Drexel Avenue from A-one Limited Agriculture to P-one Park District. No change to FW floodway or FF flood fringe districts.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Item seven, consideration of a motion to approve the plan of finance for three million three hundred and fifty thousand general obligation refunding bonds. Max, you got this one?
Thank you, Mayor and Common Council. Max Gagan, Assistant City Administrator and Comptroller. So before you tonight is the plan of finance, which is to issue three million three hundred and fifty thousand in general obligation funding bonds. And this is to refinance an earlier debt issuance from two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen. And that was for the reconstruction of Drexel Avenue from Twenty-seventh Street over to Thirteenth Street. And this debt is attributed to tax increment number seven, which council member recall is expenditure period closed earlier this year. So what we're looking to do is really refinance this debt, take advantage of the significant excess increment in the district and match those cash flows and really shorten up the amortization from two thousand thirty-two all the way to two thousand twenty-four. With that, we do have Justin Fisher here, who's the Director of Public Finance for Baird. And he'll walk you through the plan of finance, answering the questions you made. Justin?
Thank you, Max. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see everyone. So as Max, you know, mentioned, this is really to restructure the existing debt because the cash flows are looking pretty good in TID number seven. So why not push up the principal, pay it down as fast as we can, save some interest cost in the process? So in front of you is the plan of finance. Tonight, the city council would consider the plan of finance and parameter resolution that you'll see as the next agenda item. The authority for final sign-off of the bond sale within designated parameters is delegated to the city administrator or assistant city administrator comptroller. This is a little different than what we've done in the past. We've done this a couple of years ago. Instead of going through the whole bond rating process and putting together the official statement and a little bit more in-depth process, because this is so short and, you know, the size isn't tremendously large, you know, all things considered, the way it's going to make most economics sense is to go out and bid this out to local and national banks. So we're going to send out a term sheet and ultimately have them review and then ultimately take bids from them and see who's the lowest provider for this issue. So if the bids are competitive and meet council's parameters, we'll lock in the interest rates about mid-December and then close early January of two thousand twenty-three. This issue is callable April one of two thousand twenty-three. And so you can refinance it up to ninety days prior to the call date. So that's why we're setting things up now so you can be within that ninety-day window by closing. So that's why we're kind of laying the foundation right now because over the next month, we're going to be sending it out and talking to the banks and so forth to get them comfortable to bid. So the estimated size, three million three hundred and fifty thousand. This is a general obligation refunding bond, restructure the two thousand thirteen bonds. Maturities are April one, two thousand twenty-three through two thousand twenty-four. First interest, April one, two thousand twenty-three, non-callable. And then the estimated interest rate is four point nine five percent. I think that's pretty conservative. We're using pretty conservative rates because we probably won't lock in until about, for about another month. But as you've seen in the marketplace right now, things are moving pretty dramatically day over day, depending on what news comes out. So wanted to be pretty conservative in the interest rate projection for this. The max parameter would be five point seven five percent. So going to the next page, this is the overall illustration, a lot of detail on this page. But the main thing to see here is that, as Max said, this goes out, the original two thousand thirteen issue on the left side of the page goes out to two thousand thirty-two. You can see what the amortization schedule looks like there. And ultimately, we're going to restructure it, refinance it, and put it into the twenty-three and twenty-four maturities, ultimately meeting the cash flows of TID number seven that are available and able to pay it. And then because you're doing that and saving on the interest costs, it ends up being about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars potential in interest cost savings over there by shortening it up. So that's really the reason we're not necessarily doing it to refinance into new debt. It's really restructure, push up the debt and save on interest cost on the long term. With that, I'll entertain any questions?
Any questions for Justin? Okay.
Thank you.
Seeing none, motion.
Dukenyak move to approve the plan of finance for three point three five zero million dollars worth of general obligation refunding bonds.
Kerkowski will second. Roll call.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Item made is consideration of a resolution authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed three million four hundred thousand general obligation refunding bonds, series two thousand twenty-three A. Max?
So this is the companion resolution to accompany the plan of finance. And this establishes the parameters under which we can sell the debt. So just for education for the common council, the parameters of the resolution allows us to sell the debt at any date of our choosing, really take advantage of the interest rate market instead of having to come back to the council. And the two parameters that are on the set is a maximum price of three point four million dollars and a maximum interest rate of five point seven five million. But as Justin mentioned, you know, we're estimating about four point nine five percent on the interest rate. Happy to answer any questions, common council.
Questions for Max or Justin? Okay. Seeing none, motion.
For the motion, I just would like to make the comment that savings of almost four hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a good thing. So with that, I will make the, make the motion. So Dukenyak move to approve resolution number one-two-three-six-five dash one-one-one-five-two-two. That's authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed three million four hundred thousand dollars of general obligation refunding bonds, series two thousand twenty-three A.
Kerkowski will second. Roll call.
Alderman Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Gale.
Steve.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item nine, consideration of a resolution to approve the purchase of ninety-one-hundred South Fifth Avenue for the purpose of blight elimination. Melissa, you?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. This is a resolution that you have seen before as part of our lakefront development for other portions of the property that are under development. So number nine and number ten are very similar. This is a resolution that's required in support of our request for the local government unit liability exemption under state statute. So essentially, we have the two purchase and sale agreements in the queue. The first is this number nine, the ninety-one-hundred South Fifth Avenue. And number ten is for forty-three oh-one East Depot Road. You recently approved both of those agreements. So this is not just ministerial, it's really important to the city in terms of the exemption that we're allowed to have, especially taking ownership and then having that ability to move forward under the auspices of some protection in terms of the contamination. So happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Melissa? Okay. Seeing none, motion on nine, please.
I'll move to approve resolution one-two-three-six-one dash one-one-one-five-two-two, approval of purchase of ninety-one-hundred South Fifth Avenue for purpose of blight elimination.
Lorik seconds. Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Item ten, consideration of a resolution to approve the purchase of forty-three oh-one East Depot Road for the purpose of blight elimination. And Melissa?
Thank you, Mayor. As indicated, this is identical, but for the different property. As in number ten, this, just to distinguish it, the property is the two point six-six acres on the easterly part of the former Highnight property. This is for part of our bluff stabilization and other development work. This LGU exemption is necessary to the city for us to move forward. Happy to answer any questions?
Questions for Depot Road property? Seeing none, motion?
I'll move to approve resolution one-two-three-six-two dash one-one-one-five-two-two, approval of the purchase of forty-three oh-one East Depot Road for the purpose of blight elimination.
Kerkowski will second. Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Item eleven is just discussion for the council to give direction to city staff regarding the scheduling of our two thousand twenty-three regular combined common council meeting dates. So in your paget, you do have the two thousand twenty-three calendar. Clearly laid out, the council dates are circled in red. The blues are the proposed vacated meetings. Green are election days, orange National Night Out, and pink represents holidays. So please take a look and if there's any direction for staff, please feel free to speak up. Obviously, January third, there'd be no way to post and have time for that meeting.
Danny, what are we doing on National Night Out?
National Night Out is always the first Tuesday in August, correct, Catherine? Which would be the first.
Council date.
That is a council date.
We usually do the Monday of that week.
I do believe we do. Last year, I think we vacated it and we found ourselves going almost a month between. Said we could do a special, call a special if needed. So that could be a consideration, or we could do the Monday, which is thirty-first. Yes.
I mean, we're always going to go four weeks.
Correct.
I think we veiled in it. Was there any disruption?
Didn't pose a problem. We had to get all the vendor summaries and hang in some bills paid in advance. Of course, if there's something really cooking, definitely have to call the meeting.
Mayor, from the staff's perspective, we can hold the meeting. But if, I think the question is if you all participate in that event, do you, would you rather be there versus that, have the obligation of a meeting? I don't know what the answer to that question is. Certainly, we don't, staff can process a meeting just like you would otherwise.
True. I mean, in years past, I know, I think we've shifted it to the Monday, other than last year. Steve, any thoughts?
Reading the report, I don't have a problem with not having a meeting on January third or July third and not having a meeting, the National Night Out. And if we need to meet, call a special meeting.
Greg, any preference?
No, I agree with Steve.
Rich? I do, I do as well.
Sounds good to me, yeah.
I guess the direction of staff then would be next council meeting to look at vacating January the third, July the third, vacating August first. And call a special meeting if, if between July eighteenth and August fifteenth. Okay? All right. Moving right along, engineering, consideration of a resolution approving a stormwater management practices maintenance agreement with Janssen's Bruckner LLC for the Stone Brook on the Park Residential Development located at six forty-one East Drexel. Matt?
Evening, Mayor, council, Matt Sullivan, city engineer. Before you is a resolution for adopting the stormwater management practice maintenance agreement for the development, Stone Brook on the Park, which is directly west of Abinshane. This project is moving forward. This is just one of the next steps that we have to take as far as coming up with an agreement for them to do the maintenance on the stormwater management ponds. There are two wet ponds proposed for the project. This just basically holds them to doing inspections and certain maintenance, depending on those inspections and what, if those are not performed, what the city has the ability to do. Do you have any questions? Happy to answer them.
Matt, just timing of this agreement, it goes in upon completion, occupancy, or is it as soon as we sign?
Once we sign it, we'll send it down to record it.
Seeing no further questions, motion.
Kerkowski make a motion to adopt resolution number one-two-three-six-three dash one-one-one-five-two-two, a resolution approving a stormwater management practices maintenance agreement with Janssen Bruckner LLC for the Stone Brook on the Park Residential Development located at six forty-one East Drexel Avenue.
Lorik seconds. Roll call.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
And item thirteen is consideration of a resolution authorizing and recommending road improvement projects be advertised for public bid for rehabilitation in two thousand twenty-three. Once again, Matt?
Before you is a resolution that we have for roadway improvement project selection. We did bring this in front of Apewaka on November eighth, where there was little to no questions or discussion. This is very standard practice for us to go through this procedure. Typically, we do it every two years. And this will be the last time in two years. So moving forward, we'll be doing this every, annually, I guess, every year, based on our new budgets. So if you want more background, I'd be more than happy to give that to you. If you want to discuss the options and the segments, we can do that. Or the different types of maintenance procedures that are being proposed. Did reach out to all the aldermen, EPW, and other departments in questioning on whether different segments or areas that needed improvement, the selection that we have in front of you are based upon those comments and what we've seen.
Questions for Matt? Comments?
Well, I just, I just want to say, thanks for putting this list together. I know the residents on the Manitowoc have, have had issues with that stretch of road. So they're probably going to be very happy that it's going to be taken care of. Thank you.
Else? Okay. Motion.
I'll move to approve resolution one-two-three-six-four dash one-one-one-five-two-two, authorizing and the recommended road improvement projects to be advertised for public bid for rehab in two thousand twenty-three.
Lorik seconds. Roll call.
Alderman Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
And item fourteen is the license committee. I will turn that over to Alderman Kerkowski. Thank you, Mayor. I trust everyone's had an opportunity to read the items on tonight's common council report. Does anybody have any questions, cares, or concerns? Okay, hearing none. Kerkowski will make a motion to grant the various license requests as listed on the November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two license committee report.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
And item fifteen is our vendor summary report. And it's consideration of a motion to approve the November ninth, two thousand twenty-two report in the amount of nine hundred and fifteen thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-four cents. Please take a look at the report and if there's any questions, feel free to take the floor. Are satisfied? Motion.
I'll move to approve the November ninth, two thousand twenty-two vendor summary report in the amount of nine hundred and fifteen thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars fifty-four cents.
Kerkowski will second. Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
And item sixteen is consideration of a motion to convene a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin state statutes to discuss the following. Section nineteen point eight-five, sub-one, sub-G. Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub G, consider possible settlement for the Megan Williams et al. versus Oak Creek et al., Milwaukee County Case Number 2021 CV 007435. And B, Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub E, to discuss the possible amendment to the tax increment, District Number 11 Finance Development Agreement and Phase 3 Agreement for the Emerald Row Project. President Gale?
Thank you, Mayor. Clerk moves to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statutes to discuss the following. A, Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub G, to consider the possible settlement of Megan Williams et al. versus the State of Oak Creek et al. B, Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub E, to discuss the possible amendment to the tax incremental District Number 11 Finance Development Agreement and Phase 3 Agreement for the Emerald Row Project.
Clerk seconds. Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
We will now convene and to close session and resume at its conclusion. Okay, we will now consider a motion to reconvene in an open session?
Thank you, Mayor. Gale moves to reconvene in the open session.
Kirkowski will second. Roll call.
Alderman Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye. And item 18 is consideration to take motion if.
Thank you, Mayor. Clerk move that the common council approves the release of all claims in Milwaukee County Case Number 2021 CV 7435.
Kirkowski will second. Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Okay. That'll get us to adjournment, where we adjourn if there's any hunters out there, have a safe and successful hunt. This is the big weekend. We will be meeting again on Tuesday, the 22nd, for a budget meeting. General public is interested. That will be a special meeting held at 5:30 PM. With that, oh, one last thing, like to thank all our poll workers and our clerks for a great job on last week's election. They did a stand-up job without a doubt. Again, kudos to them. With that, motion to adjourn, please.
Clerk moves to adjourn.
Dukenyak second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.